Good evening and thank you for joining us this morning, or this evening, for our City Council Town Hall meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Mansfield, Nichols, Paulson.
Here.
Here. Thank you. Agenda item two is snow, safety, removal, and responsibilities. City officials will discuss snow-related issues, including safety, snow removal, and citizens' responsibilities. So we'll go ahead and just roll into that. Agenda item number two, after we're done with it, we'll have some comments from the audience, if there are any, and then we'll go from there. But with that, I've asked a couple people to come up here with us. We've got Tori here that is over responsible for code enforcement issues, and I've got Tom here that is responsible for the snow removal and the streets and things, and we've got...
Chad.
Your title is the chief.
Captain.
Captain. Captain Higbee here. I don't know why, I just lost out of my mind, but Captain Higbee is here with us also to kind of back everybody up and also answer some questions, and I think he's got a little presentation as well. So with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Tom to go ahead and talk to us a little bit and kind of show people, you know, what streets are important, what ones we hit first, and what ones we hit last. And if you pay attention, you'll see the mayor's street is the last, last one on the list when it comes to snow removal. So, Tom.
Well, thank you, everyone. I want to start talking tonight about kind of our processes and our steps that go involved, that are involved in the city's snow management process. First off, we can start with talking a little bit about how our preseason starts. So around the month of October, we begin to transition from our summer activities, which includes road maintenance, right-of-way maintenance, and other responsibilities through the valley, that we start switching over to our snow removal efforts. So that process begins fairly early, and we want to be able to go through this process so that when the first storm happens, we can be prepared. We try and get this done the first part of October because, as many people know, in Pocatello, we can see snow pretty early in October sometimes. So the first thing we do is we start preseasoning our equipment. So what we'll do is during the summer, we use our dump trucks for road work, and then in the winter, we convert those into snowplow trucks. And what's involved in that is installing a sander or a spreader in the back of it that applies aggregate to the surface as well as the plows. And so we'll send out our fleet department, and they, during the summer, they'll go out and inspect our plows and our sanders to see if there's any work needs done so that we can catch anything with preventative maintenance that hopefully won't happen during the middle of an event. So once those are checked, we install them on the trucks, make sure they function properly, and then the next step we do is begin training. When we have new employees, or we have other employees that want to learn different routes throughout town, training is a big part of our process. So we will send out trucks on nice days, and we'll have an operator driving and then a senior operator riding along with them, and they'll mock the route. They'll go through and drive through the route, and then they'll give them advice on where's the tricky spots, give them some guidance on how to run our snow routes. We also have a driving simulator that we can put new employees on, as well as seasoned employees for refreshers. They can actually get into a simulator, drive a plow truck in an urban environment, and see what it takes to negotiate a cityscape during a snow event, including slick roads, navigating around vehicles, and so forth.
Real quick, I just have to tell you, oftentimes I think, "Well, I could do this. Just give me a plow on my truck, and I will do my own yard, and my own street," or something, "or I'm driving down the road, and it's been a warm day, and it's kind of slushy and stuff, and you know, if we just put the plow down, and it's easy, so why don't I just do this?" You know? Obviously, training's a major issue when it comes to hitting cars and destroying equipment and things like that.
Absolutely. It puts a large demand on the plow, so it takes a great amount of finesse to be able to negotiate these large vehicles through a residential area. Speed's also a big factor. That's one thing that we train a lot with, is on those slushy days, if they're going too fast, some of that slush can end up on people's front porch if they're going too fast. And so we train that, we train with that to help our employees manage their speed, manage how close they can get to a car. These big trucks, when you're sitting in there, they have very long hoods that stick out, and you can't see very much in front of you. And so that's one of the things, we want to give them as much seat time in optimal conditions so that when the bad conditions happen, we can do that.
On that note, being trained or untrained, what is the potential of, like, damage to the street? Like, if someone's untrained and they drop it too low to the ground, is there potential danger to, like, ripping up the asphalt that's down?
So that's a good question. When they put the plows down, we put it into float so it kind of goes over the terrains. But for instance, when you approach a set of railroad tracks, you need to bump your plow up, because if you go over there, not only can you damage the tracks, but you can rip the plow completely off the truck. The other thing as well, if they're not, if the depth perception's not there and they're dragging the plow down the curb, they can damage the curb. So all of those are very real scenarios that can happen, and we do train for that. The plows...
Could I ask a follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Sort of related to Cory's question, one of the, on a different issue, one of the things I hear from people in the community the most about speeding problems is they want speed bumps put on our roads. And I know whenever I've brought that idea to you, I've heard why we don't do speed bumps, and I think one of the reasons, I know fire trucks is another reason, and the damage that it can do, but also snow plows. And I was interested in your idea about that it floats over certain things, but would that include speed bumps?
Right. And so, speed bumps are a challenge for snow removal. The truck, the plow does have a certain amount of float to it, but it's only got a certain range. And so, once it's above a certain range, that plow will just remove the speed bump. And then, that's dangerous to us, because then you have a projectile coming outside. That's the other part of, like, and we can talk about this a little later, is placing your snow in the road. That's a real hazard to our drivers and to the public, because that's, that snow gets driven on, and then it freezes, and these trucks, while they do float on the road, if they hit something, it's called a live edge. It's a spring-loaded edge where the plow will actually trip over something. But there's a range of what it'll trip on. And so if they hit a large, you know, glacier in the middle of the road, we've had trucks that hit those, and it will throw the plow into a parked car. We've had multiple occasions where that's happened. And so we just encourage people not to put snow in the road. But speed bumps are very problematic for snow removal, so.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
You're on a roll, and we interrupted you.
Well, the next thing for preseason prep that we do is we haul material in. So we use a one-to-one mixture of sand and salt for the hills and the steep areas of this town. We live in a valley, which has its own set of challenges. We have different climates within this valley. You could, on the south end of town, on Johnny Creek, you can have, you know, a foot of snow, and you go up until onto the fairway and summit areas on the Highland Hill, and you'll have a trace. And so we have very challenging terrain, geography. And so for some of those steeper slopes, we use sand. And then for most of the flatter lands, we're using straight salt now. Two reasons for that. The salt just, it melts the snow at a more rapid pace. And then, on the flip side of that, while cleaning up after winter's over, we spend probably three months of street sweeping to pick up all the sand and the debris that's left over after winter. And that's a very expensive process, and so we've seen that even though the salt's a little more expensive, we've seen the gains on the cleanup throughout the city by using straight salt. And so we haul, we have the capability of hauling our own salt. We have three trucks that drive down to Ogden, and we have three different contractors down there that we can purchase salt from. They have salt mines in Utah. And as you could imagine, in the middle of a storm event, there's a lot of people at these, at these salt mines trying to get material. So part of our preseason prep is we'll go start making runs down to get salt. And just on a little side note, because we like to brag about this, our glass recycling program for sanitation department, we're actually able to haul glass to Salt Lake to the recycle, and then we backhaul the salt back. So we used to drive to Salt Lake empty, pick up salt, drive back. So now we've been able to kill two birds with one stone on that, so we're pretty excited about that.
That's good.
Yeah. And so that's a big thing, is getting enough materials at our facilities so that we have an inventory there in case something bad happens. Manpower is a very big part of snow removal. Manpower and equipment, it's a slow process. So we also have contacts that we can have an outside agency haul us salt, but it falls into that same problem as during a large event in Idaho and Utah, it's very difficult to get a contractor to haul you salt. And so we like to take that into our own hands, control our own destiny with that, and try and be ahead of the storms. So that kind of wraps up what our preseason is. The other thing that we do, and you'll see up on the screen, we've got our snow route map, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, but we get together as a group every year because we're constantly adding new roads throughout the, throughout the community. We're also really big on post-processing our events, so we can go back after the events with some of our data that we've incorporated that we'll talk about in a minute, and we can make changes to these, to these snow routes, depending on what we've experienced.
Mr. Mayor, before we leave preseason, how much salt are you bringing up?
So we usually get around 2,000 to 3,000 tons a year of salt.
Okay.
So it's around $26 a ton.
Thank you.
So as we move along into winter, the next thing that we do is if there is a storm forecasted, we're in constant communication with National Weather Service. They are one of our greatest allies out at the airport. They do daily weather briefings for us. They are available 24 hours a day with forecasters that will take our phone calls. This is a great relationship that we've really improved over the years. We count on them very much for the duration of the storm, the precipitation, the temperatures, the wind. So our interaction with the National Weather Service, I can't say enough how important they are to us and how they really have the community's best interest at heart when they're helping us plan these. As we get these forecasts from the National Weather Service, what it'll allow us to do is to start planning for this, the storm that's coming. And so one of the biggest things that we do to prepare for a storm that's coming is a preventative treatment called anti-icing. So we have four vehicles that have a tank on the back and a spray bar on the back, and we apply salt brine to the road as a pre-treatment. We have a salt brine manufacturing facility. We have a plant ourselves where we can make that. We make it for pennies on the dollar. It's around 23%, 25%, we'll just say salt, 75% water. And what the salt brine does is we pre-apply it, we apply it in a liquid form, the water evaporates off, and it leaves a slight crust of salt on the road. This is, this is, has really been a big benefit to us. A lot of the worst storms we get are the storms that are only a trace amount of snow, because it's easily compacted into straight ice. And so we do a lot of after-hours calls, we work with the police department. In the middle of the night, they'll call out our on-call people. We've seen a dramatic decrease in overtime calls, because the salt brine will actually melt almost an inch of snow. So as we put that down, it starts attacking the snow from the bottom up, and it buys us time. And so a lot of times, if we just get a trace of snow, what used to be one of the most dangerous conditions we had, you would think that deep snow's our big problem, but the little, the little stuff's what gets us the most. The salt brine, you can drive down one road and it's completely wet, and a side street that hasn't been treated is covered in snow. And so the weather service, the information we get from the weather service is critical for that, because if there's going to be a large wind associated with it, we don't want to pre-treat when there's wind. Or if it's going to rain before it snows, we don't want to pre-treat, because the rain will just wash the salt off. Salt brine, as it begins to, as it begins to melt the snow or ice on the ground, as it melts it, it dilutes the salt. And once you get, you know, down to like 10% dilution of the salt, it really doesn't work that much. And so if we have a wind, a strong wind, it will, it will blow the snow across the road, the brine grabs it, it melts it, so the road's now wet. And as the wind continues to blow across it, it dilutes that salt brine to the point that now it's liquid water and it'll flash-freeze. And so that's some of the stuff that's key for us to learn from the weather service, is if it's going to be really windy, we try and back off on a lot of our pre-treatments, or if it's going to rain before that. So that's kind of how we prepare for the storms. When we know there's a storm coming, of course, we make sure all the trucks are up to speed, but we're very conscious of that so that we're not, we're not surprised by that. The other thing that we try and do is we have a city fueling site. We make sure that we have plenty of fuel. I don't know if many of you remember the winter of 1617, we got 80 inches of snow that year, and it was brutal. We got a lot of snow that year.
I wasn't alive. 1617?
2016.
2016. Okay.
We were too alive.
We have a nervous tick about this.
That's a long time.
So...
Tom, before we move on to that pre-treatment, after, after we've done the pre-treatment and we get a storm event, can we go back over with that pre-treatment again? And does it help us? Does it hurt us?
Yeah.
What do we do with that?
That's a, that's a great question. So when we put it down before the storm, we refer to it as an anti-icing. So what we're doing is putting that down to help the ice not adhere to the road so it's easier to plow, but also it melts from the ground up. During the event, we do what's called de-icing with salt brine, and we'll actually drive down the roads and apply the liquid salt on the snow. Salt is kind of a tricky, tricky animal. It has to have water to begin the melting function, and so when you apply the granular salt on the road, it's got to have some sort of frictional aspect where it breaks it down, starts to generate water, and then the salt becomes active. Well, if we're applying salt brine, that process has already begun.
Yeah.
And so we've, we've done certain modifications for our trucks. We've been doing this for a long time. We actually have on our snowplow trucks, large 500-gallon tanks on the trucks full of salt brine, and we actually spray the salt brine onto the salt as we apply it to help speed up that process. And then it doesn't have to wait for some sort of other form of energy to start that process. So as we move into a storm event, that's when we start dispatching our crews. If it happens during the day, our supervisors are managing that from our office. We have a myriad of technology that we'll talk about here at the end that helps our supervisors make educated decisions. If it's after-hours, we rely heavily on the police department. They're out driving every street in the middle of the night. When they, when they start to feel like it's reaching an unsafe condition, they'll call our on-call person, and then we start to call our crews in. So as our crews come in, we've got the city broken down into anywhere from nine to 12 routes, and you can see those up on the screen there. If we have the manpower, because we have people on vacation, sick, you know, certain things, we can do as many as 12 routes, but if we don't have enough people, we can cut it down to nine. And it's basically the same 12 routes, it's just one of the trucks, or a couple of trucks just double up on it. And so you can see we've got the northwest, northeast, fairway, summit. These are just some of the, some of the areas that we break it down to. Within each one of those areas, you'll see, I just zoomed in on a couple of them to make it easier to see. Our philosophy on this is when the storm begins, we go out and we address all of the priority streets. And what this is, is we want, when we're, when we're first out attacking the storm, we need to make it so that emergency responders can respond to houses. We have to make sure that the school buses can go. We have to make sure that commerce can get moving. We have to make sure that if you need to go to the hospital, you can get to the hospital. And so we've selected these roads as our primary roads, and our philosophy is you're never more than one or two streets away from a priority road. So if you needed to go to the hospital, you may struggle for one block or two blocks until you get to that priority road. But then, once you're on that priority road, you could take a priority road to most of the, of, you know, like the grocery stores if you need food, to the hospital if you need medical attention, or if you need to go to school.
Do those, does that priority road designation carry over to maintenance operations on that, on those roads the rest of the year?
We base a lot of our, our maintenance operations on, on traffic counts, because the more vehicles it is, there's harder on the road. But we also, during the summer, we use a model that does a cost-benefit analysis of all the roads to help kind of guide that. But some of our treatment options, like if we say we do a microseal that'll last seven to 10 years, on a residential street, it may last 10 years, but on an arterial road that gets three times the amount of cars, it may only last seven. And so we do cater our summer maintenance to priorities because they carry more vehicles, but we also are aware of the needs in the residential areas.
So there might be more winter priority roads and summer priority roads then? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. So, because when we do the maintenance on the roads, we kind of want to have a holistic approach to the whole community, whereas this, we have to unfortunately pick winners and losers in this game, right? We have to have the priority roads that are the main thoroughfares to get traffic moving. And then after those roads are treated, then we move on to the collectors and the residential roads. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah. Here's another example up in the fairway area. You can see, so let's say the storm begins. This, our crews go out, and while the storm is active, they're to focus on these roads that are highlighted in black. As soon as they cover all those roads and the snow is starting to subside, that's when they move to the other sections of town. We pride ourselves on, "We're going to go to every road, it just may take us a little bit to get there." Snow removal, we don't, we don't really want to call it snow removal anymore. We don't really remove snow, we displace it, right? It goes to the side of the roads. And that's, unfortunately, that's, that's difficult, and we'll get to that in a minute. But we focus on these so we can keep the community moving, and then as it starts to subside, then we start branching into the residential streets. So on a storm that's, you know, a trace to one inch of snow, we get, if we get called out, because we don't get everything's pre-treated, we don't get every, every priority road pre-treated. So our, our drivers will come in, they go to these main roads, they'll apply aggregate, and if it warrants, they'll put their plow down. And so we'll just, we'll go in there, and basically what we're trying to do is melt, is melt ice and small amount of snow. When we get up to one to three inches, that's where we start dropping the plows. We made a switch a few years back, and we've installed carbide cutting edges on all of our trucks that last 10 times as long. And so our, kind of our new philosophy is just put it down, because everything that we can plow off, we don't have to melt, which saves us some money. When it gets to one to three inches, what we'll do is we'll go through and, and we'll open the lanes, is what we call it. So we'll, we'll go through and we'll just plow the travel lanes. When you're about one to three inches, what it'll do is when you just plow one way in and plow one way out, it kind of disperses that windrow under the parked cars. So it doesn't really hamper driveways and intersections and stuff like that. So we'll, we'll just punch the lanes open and apply aggregate as needed. When we start getting to three to six-inch range and above, that's when we start thinking about plowing curb to curb. That's where, when we go down a road and we plowed, and it creates a bigger windrow that's going to be an obstruction for the car to move, that's when we start taking it all the way to the curb. Unfortunately, that, that also leads to snow in front of driveways, and that's just an unfortunate byproduct of the snow process. But our drivers, what we do is we train them to go slow. We don't throw it on sidewalks. We try not to throw it on sidewalks. We try not to bury in. But unfortunately, that is, that is one of the byproducts there, and unfortunately, there's not much we can do about it.
Some cities plow to the middle. Is, is, what's the difference in philosophies?
Absolutely. So if you talk to emergency services in those, in those areas that plow to the middle, particularly the ambulances, one of the communities up north, we've spoken to them, they'll, they'll have to drive a couple of blocks to be able to get to a house that's right across the windrow. The biggest thing for us is roads are crowned, which means they drain all the water to the curb. And so you can imagine, you have this large windrow, we call it, of snow in the middle of the road. Well, during the day, the sun comes out, it melts it, it runs out, and then it freezes at night. Now we're back out treating that again. Then the next day, the sun comes out, it melts it onto the road, as it's draining to the edges, it freezes, we're back out again. And then that process, the reason they make curb and gutter out of concrete is because water and asphalt don't like to play very well. And so stockpiling snow on the asphalt is not a long-term solution that we feel is worth, is worth it. So, thank you. Yep. So during the storm, those are kind of our thresholds we work at. We, we have 12 to 14 trucks, we have 24, 25 plow operators. So whenever we have a storm, we have to plan for that storm to last for 12 hours, right? We don't want our drivers plowing snow for more than 12 hours. And so if we have a storm event, we would love to call in as many people as we can after-hours to plow as much as we can, as fast as we can. But if that storm event turns up, turns into a 12 to 14-hour event, and we called in all the operators on the early shift, when they go home, we don't have anybody else to come and do that. So our planning process, we have to plan that it's going to be an extended event. So also, like, on the weekends, to help alleviate some of the costs, when we have an event on the weekends, we just focus on the arterial roads, and then when we come back to work on Monday, that's when we start focusing on the residential and the collector streets.
So Tom, real quick, I look at this map you have here, and all the black highlighted roads, and you mentioned earlier that we can only go so fast. How many miles of roads do we have? How long does it take us to typically cover the city as a whole? Oftentimes, we get calls and people say, "You haven't been here, you're not here, and it's dangerous," and...
Yeah. So we have about 700 lane miles of roads in the town. We have 277 center line. Some of those roads are two-lane, some of those are four-lane, but we, we look about between 700, 900 actual lanes of roads. But we, we look about between 700, 900 actual lanes of roads. And so our plows need to travel pretty slowly because we don't want to hit cars with what's being broadcast out from the plow. And so they operate in about a 10 mile an hour speed. And so you could imagine taking a 700 mile trip, going 10 miles an hour. It's going to take three days, right? And so that's the biggest thing with snow removal is, is it's a slow process, and we can't be everywhere at once. And so that's where we just rely on, on the citizens to be patient. You know, the plows are going as fast as they can, but if they go faster than that, then we start damaging vehicles that are parked on the side of the road, we start plowing in, in driveways and stuff like that.
Rick?
We've annexed 520 or 30 acres in this past year. I don't know how many lane miles that's added to the inventory that the street is maintaining, but is that going to slow down service to the other people who were there before?
Yeah, it's, we're looking at about six lane miles, so it, out on the South Fifth. It's, it's going to make an impact, but we're, we're trying our best to mitigate that. The, the struggle with that annexation is South Fifth's five lanes, and so it just takes a really long time to cover all those lanes. And so that's one of the things, if you'll see the picture up there, we've started putting on an extra plow on the side of the trucks. So this is pretty common on an interstate where you don't have a lot of traffic, so you can do two lanes at once. It's very tricky in city limits because it's hard to see. So we have these plows in certain areas where the, where the roads are wider, and we use these like to go down Yellowstone, South Fifth, where we can do two lanes at once to help speed that process up. But this requires a very skilled operator. This is where we spend a lot of time on simulators with this one because in the middle of the night, it's really dark to see that, and all they have is their rearview mirrors, right? They can't lean over their shoulder because there's a bed in the way. So we light the end of it up really well, and we've, we've had really good luck, but we don't encourage this in a residential area. So if it's, when the roads begin to narrow up, that's when we, we can fold that up and just use the front plow. We talked a little bit about how we manage these areas. So I've, I've attached our snow plow fleet. We have GPS'd all of our, our plow trucks. So you can see this is really busy. This was Monday during that snow event, what our trucks were, were performing that day. So we can look at it at a little more granular level. So this is the fairway summit area. So what our supervisors can do is during these events, in past, they've just kind of went and drove around town to check the areas. They're able to, to see where the trucks have actually been throughout the storm. If we have people call that says we, our road hasn't been plowed, we can actually give them a time that it was. A lot of times the calls we get is, is that they haven't seen a plow, but it was actually there at about four in the morning, so they didn't, you know, no one's awake to see that. The other thing we employ is we have cameras at all of our traffic signals, and so our supervisors have access to that. And those are real-time feeds that come in, and so they can actually, they have a, a view of, of all portions of, of the valley. For instance, we got one on South Valley Road, so they can see the south end. We've got one up on Hospital Way, we've got one on Fairway and Bench, out on the north end. So they can kind of see where the, where the assets need to be deployed. That's a big thing, like when we were talking earlier about our geography, you know, we send all the trucks out at first because we don't know what the storm has actually done to the whole community. So as the trucks go out, we can start getting feedback of, it's not really this bad on this section. So as soon as they're done, then we can send that truck up to double up in the certain areas that have more, more issues. And so we've started using a lot more technology to help us make better decisions on how we, how we do this. Snow removal is tough because half the population wants everything plowed, the other half doesn't want it plowed. And so we try and walk a fine line with that of doing our best to not inconvenience the homeowners, property owners, but also our, our primary focus with, with our snow management program is making sure that a police car, fire truck, and ambulance can get to your house. Make sure your kids can get to school, make sure you can get to work. And so this has been kind of really important for us. We can actually post-process a lot of this. When they, when the truck doubles back on itself, we can actually see that on these maps, so that's a training opportunity of how to better utilize our time and our efforts so that we're not backtracking on things. Some of the, some of the new things that we're working on is we've installed some of these in-ground sensors throughout the community. We have five or six of those. That goes in about 18 inches into the ground, and it's got a puck that sits on the surface. So this sensor will actually give us real-time data of surface temperature, the core temperature, which is 12 to 18 inches below the surface. It'll tell us how much salt is on the road, it will tell us what our grip level is. And so grip level is, it basically tells us if it's slick or it's not slick, it's a function of the friction. It does a myriad of, of information, and these are real-time so that our decision-makers have all the information they can have at their hands. And so this is kind of our dashboard or our sensor locations. You can see, we've got them on benches, we've got them down in the flats. We'd like to put a lot more in, but you can see, we've got, you know, Gwen Street, which is a, was a, which is a tough road, it's a very steep road with school on it, the Johnny Creek area, Alameda, and Yellowstone, Memorial and Terry Satafield. So you can see these are some of the, the sensor locations, and here's some of the data that we can get from that. And so this was Monday. The, the, I don't know if my mouse will show up on here. So this brown line right here, we didn't turn on all the functions on this side. This brown line gives us the, the subsurface temperature, so the in-ground temperature, and then the green gives us the pavement temperatures. We can also track the, the dew point, all sorts of things. This was what we were looking at, because Monday morning up on Gwen, we had, we had some issues. You can see that, that the temperature dropped fairly quickly, and you can see that these are never really, it's fairly chaotic line, right? I mean, it's linear. What we experienced here was something that I haven't seen a long time, is it flatlined at a certain temperature. And so it was at 32 and a half degrees for three hours flat, which, that's just a weird anomaly in nature that happens.
What does it?
What it did is...
What are the repercussions?
It made it very slick. It made it very hard to treat. And so that was probably our biggest problem on Monday was getting the school buses up the hill on Gwen. And so what they could do is they can see this, and we can, we start planning, post-process this and say, what can we do better, you know, in the future? And so you can see, we had this line that was hovering there. And so what this tells us, and, and I've relayed to our supervisors, is this is what we need to start watching for so we can get there before this, right? And then another function that this will do is it will actually forecast for you. So this is forecasting what the in-ground sensor talks with the forecasting agencies. And it'll actually show like, sorry. This is what we predict the surface temperature is going to be, this is what we're going to predict, predict will be, the air temperature, the dew point, the grip levels. And so what we do a lot with this is we see what this forecast looks like, and then we come back the next day and see if it really matched this, this forecast. The forecasting is, isn't as, as accurate as we'd like, but it at least gets us in the ballpark. The other thing that we've started to put on all of our trucks is a truck-mounted sensor. And what this will do is, this is the sensor right here, it's mounted right here behind the snow plow on the bumper, and it will actually tell us real-time surface temperature, it'll tell us all the weather conditions there. But the biggest thing that it does is it bounces a sound wave down, and it'll tell you how much ice is on the road, and it'll give you a grip level. And so the information that we get back from that looks like this. This was the, the west side route on Monday, and so as the truck drove this route, this is, red is icy, white is snow, green is water, you know, slushy or wet. And so this shows when they first went out and applied this. But then what we do afterwards is when they go back to double-check the routes, we can see how effective their treatments were. And so we knew this is what it started like, but then we can also, when they go back out to check their routes, we can actually see what the melt rate was and how, how efficiently we used our materials. We try not to over-apply material, and so this helps us a lot because we can start, you know, putting together some sort of a plan of what that looks like moving forward. These are really big post-processing things that we like to use. We, we not only use those very, very much during the storm, but after as well. And that, that kind of wraps it up for, for there, and if we have any questions. And then the, I guess the last thing I just want to get across is it's a slow process. We encourage the residents to be patient, the property owners to be patient. Get your vehicle in good working order. Tires are amazing. The technologies now are, are pretty amazing. We live in a very tricky community. The immutable laws of physics doesn't work in our favor when you have a, a large amount of ice on a slope. It's just kind of difficult. We encourage, we encourage homeowners not to put their snow on the road. Like we said, it can cause obstructions, it can cause really bad after-effects. But that ice is really difficult. We've had it hurt the drivers where the steering wheel turns and it hits their thumbs. So we've instruct, we instruct our drivers not to put their thumbs in. But also, we've, we've hit those and it shoved us into cars and done property damage. And so we just encourage the public to be patient. We can't be everywhere at once, we try our best to get where we can. And just give the plows room, plan your trips accordingly, stay up to speed on the, on the forecasts. The majority of the stuff we see is, is driving too fast for conditions. And so encourage everybody to just take a few extra minutes, plan your day accordingly so you can, you can make it home safe at night.
Well, a couple, Rick, did you have something?
Well, just real quick, some, some communities use designated snow routes. They ask people to move cars. They want, because they're going to plow an area, and I don't know how they let those homeowners know, maybe it's reverse 911 or something. But have we, do we have a plan like that for a severe storm? A 12 or 15 incher like we get once or twice a year?
So we, we drive a lot of our decision on the feedback we get from residents. We don't have a lot, a big push to do a parking restrictions. The tough part about parking restrictions is, once you enact them, you have to give a certain amount of time before we tow the vehicle. And that's, that's what happens with, with some of the communities that put these parking restrictions. Pocatello's blessed with large roads, we have wide roads. We have the room to work. We, we, at this point, we just want to want to leave it to the residents that, to, to pull their cars in their driveways if they can. We have a lot of older parts of town where there is no off-street parking. And the last thing we want to do is have someone have to park a block away and try and walk home in deep snow because they can't park in front of their house. So we encourage people to move their vehicles off the side of the road, but we're getting pretty good at this, and we would love to have every vehicle off the road, but we understand that puts an undue burden on property owners. What we, what we try and do is when we have a big event and we go plow curb to curb, property owners are pretty, pretty sharp and they park where we have plowed. We always go out for the week after and check these routes. As we're going, where the cars are moved, we plow it back. We just, the people of Pocatello have been, been very well about managing where they park, so we haven't seen a need for that.
Thank you.
One question I didn't answer, I apologize for that. So we talked about 700 miles of road, and all this and that. So when we're plowing curb to curb, that's usually when we go to 24-hour shifts, 12-hours a day. So we have 12 hours for one crew, 12 hours for the other. The fastest we've done the whole community is like 27 hours. And so for us, that's pretty quick to get every road pushed curb to curb. You know, if we're waiting for parking restrictions, because we have to give people a certain amount of time to move or else we tow, which is something we don't like, it just delays that process even more. And so we would just as soon get there, get it done, and get out of the way.
Well, a couple takeaways that I, that I have here. Number one is the city's using next-level technology really to be able to find out what's on the roads, plow the roads and things like that. When somebody calls in to say, hey, I haven't seen a, a, a snow plow, I, I haven't seen, we actually have probably been there, we have GPS on every one of our vehicles that we can go back and say, it was actually here at this time, and, and so on. And then 700 miles of road at 10 miles, that's like Pocatello to Denver, Colorado, I think.
Close.
It's close. Imagine driving 10 miles an hour from here to Denver, Colorado, and that's how long it takes us to clear the roads, basically. And so it's, yeah, we've got more than one plow out there, we've got, I don't know, how many plows do we have?
Anywhere, we got 14 we could use.
So we've got basically 14 plows that we have out there on a regular basis in a snow event, and that's, that's quite a few assets. Tom has always said, there's, there's two ways to handle a snow, a snow event. You either need more, more time or more assets to do it. And so when we lay down the pretreatment, that's buying us more time because we cannot afford the more assets. I mean, if we were to take care of an event, we would need three times the assets we have. Dump truck costs what, how many, what, $100,000, $200,000? And then all the equipment and...
Two to three.
$200,000, all the equipment to go on it, and then the employee to sit in that personnel in there. And so you just, it's not feasible to hit these roads every day, every time by 8:00 AM. And so it's important to just ask the community to just, you know, please be patient with us. We're coming if we haven't already been there, and sometimes these snow events are, are big events that we have to hit these, that 700 miles two or three times in, in the day. And so it's, it's, it's a long time. Lynda, did you have something? I wanted to get to Tori.
Yes, sorry. Real quick comment, and I, and I told this to Tom last year, but you said people don't see you because they're sleeping, but you know, I'm not one of those people. So I was up very late one night when we had a major storm last winter, and I was just amazed at how many trucks. And I'm on a corner, and one of the roads is a main road because it's near the university and everything, but just constant trucks all night long. And I was really, I was surprised by that, but also pleased that, you know, they're, they're really out there working. And when people, because they don't see them, they think they're not there, but, but they are, and I saw it myself. So I was very pleased with that service.
One thing that, sorry, kind of validates stuff. I mean, we all have learned in grade school, right, water freezes at 32 degrees. And so when you're driving down Yellowstone and the air temperature's 25 degrees and the road's wet, that, that's, that doesn't happen by accident, right? There was a concerted effort to make that happen.
That's right, for sure. All right, I want to leave a couple minutes to Tori because this is a concern that we have on a very regular basis during a snow event, is code enforcement and people being able to move not only with their vehicles, but by, you know, pedestrians and wheelchairs are ones that I always think of often, oftentimes. And so I wanted to make sure that Tori had a few minutes to go over that, so.
Thank you. So as code enforcement, obviously our job is to enforce codes, and part of our codes is snow removal and ice off of sidewalks. And so as a responsible, any responsible party for their property or business, it's their responsibility to make sure the perimeter of the sidewalk, if you're on a corner, whatever the case may be, it's your responsibility to make sure that that snow is removed, snow and ice. And so what, if we get complaints, we can go out and we, we try to make face-to-face contact with the homeowner or the business owner and just kind of educate them, like you, you're responsible for the removal of the snow. you, you're responsible for the removal of the snow. And we'll follow up. And if they haven't removed the snow within twenty-four hours, we can give them a warning. So we get, we get quite a few complaints about snow removal and ice from sidewalks because it does cause a hazard for elderly people, children, handicap. So it's important that they keep the sidewalks clean. And we encourage instead of, if you have a neighbor that they haven't shoveled their sidewalk, to go over and talk to them if they can't physically do it, if you can help them or you can contact ordinance and we can see if we have any assistance to go out and help them plow their sidewalks to make it easier.
So if we have a neighbor that isn't doing well and that cannot, then there's a chance that code enforcement could help find somebody that could help them clear that walk.
Yes.
That's good to know. That's good to know.
Another issue is if, if we've come, come out to your property a couple of times and giving you warnings and it, they're still there. One of the, what can happen is we can issue a misdemeanor citation.
Okay.
And that can result in a, a fine or jail time, just so that, because of how important it is that the sidewalks are clear.
So I think that another thing that's super important is we have tools that we can use. We don't necessarily want to issue citations.
No, and that's why we make our best effort to go out and contact and educate. But we had several people call last year complaining because they had to walk downtown in the road because sidewalks were full of ice and snow. They couldn't walk on the sidewalk. So it makes it dangerous for the citizens.
Yeah. Okay, is that, Captain Higbee, do you have any final comments?
Not a lot, but yeah, we aren't out there to go out and issue citations to citizens or we're not out to get anybody. We're usually responding to a complaint that has come into us via the online report or people call-in dispatch, which gets transferred back to Tori with code enforcement, things like that. We're out there to, to educate the public about the hazards of putting the snow on the roadway to the snowplow drivers. But it also, if they're piloted out on the roadway, it makes a vision obstruction for the drivers going down the road, for pedestrians trying to cross the streets or pedestrians that being able to see the, the cars coming down the road and things like that. Because in Pocatello, our, our snow does accumulate. And I mean, there's a lot of places that the snow's four, five, six feet tall on street corners and things like that, if they've been shoveling it out of their parking lot and things like that. But it creates a vision obstruction for the, the citizens that are walking down the sidewalk and trying to cross the street in a crosswalk and things like that. So we, we want to, like I say, we, our big thing is education to the public about it. And we want to try to work with them to see how we can mitigate that problem and try to accomplish our ultimate goal of clearing the sidewalks and the roads safely so that everybody can move around freely in the city of Pocatello.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I see a conflict here. Where does someone on Yellowstone or downtown, where there is no green space to put this snow, if they can't put it in the street, where are they supposed to put it?
Well, we've, we've asked people to always put it just on the, in the curb.
Isn't that the street?
So, well, it's on the edge of the street, yeah. But that's where it should be going is, is right at, on the curb, not out into the middle of the street. But you know, that first foot or two into the curb is where we encourage people to put that snow. And, and typically if you have a, a snow blower, you can angle that snow blower down and it will put that snow pretty much in the curb area there. And so where you don't have green space, that's what we would encourage.
Thank you.
Tom was pretty nice when he said, don't put it in the streets because it can damage the equipment and stuff like that. The reality, when you're driving one of these big trucks and you have a big iceberg, I think he called it, and you hit that, the driver's safety is, is really truly at risk also. And you hit something solid like that, that can throw the driver, you know, through a windshield or, or with a seatbelt that can really tweak their back and things like that. And so we encourage, that's another reason we encourage people to not do that. We have a lot of people that will go in some areas with their four-wheelers and a plow, and plow the snows, the snow out of driveways and the sidewalk. And they do a pretty good job pushing it to the other side of the street when they have the opportunity. Sometimes that snow gets pushed out into the road, which makes it a lot more difficult. And we, we run into some conflict with us pushing the snow to the curb and then then pushing it from the curb back out into the street. And then we push it back to the curb and we, and we create a conflict. And that's, we, we don't want, really want to do that very often. And that's the reality of what happens though, because there's a lot of people that have to park on the street in the curb. And when all the snow's there, it's, there's, there's some issues. And we recognize that. One of the reasons why we work with the citizens to not cite them and give, write citations immediately so that we, you know, we're, we're not interested in doing that. We, we're more interested in compliance and, and trying to, to work. I mean, we all live in this community together and we all have to kind of coexist and, and that, that's part of it. But right in the curb itself is, is the, what we encourage people to do. If you have green space, obviously, put it in the green space. But sometimes that doesn't work.
Mr. Mayor?
If I could just touch on one thing before we leave this is, one thing we also want to educate the public on is we, we understand that they need to put that snow somewhere. And that's, they kind of push to the curb and we push to the curb and that's where that, that snow belongs. However, when you're doing, when you're plowing your, or snowblowing or shoveling your driveway, if there's a fair amount of snow that you're trying to fit into the curb, put it on the downstreet side, downstream side of your driveway so the trucks go with traffic. And so what we see a lot of times is we're going to plow this way. And when they clean their driveway, they put all the snow right here. And it's spilling off into the road, right? And so when we come by to clean that up, to plow curb to curb, we carry all that snow that they spent all that time putting upstream, we carry that right back into their property, or not in their property, in front of their driveway. And so we always say, if you have to, if you don't have anywhere else to put it and you gotta, you know, get a little excessive in the curb line, we understand that. At least put it downstream so that we're not pushing that same exact snow you just worked so hard in front of your driveway.
Yeah, I have heard that complaint.
Yeah.
I just wanted to follow up on downtown specifically because this was a discussion on the Historic Downtown Pocatello Board. And building owners who don't have any green space, it's all hard. And, and not only just making sure that they understand that it's their responsibility to clear their sidewalks in front of their businesses or their buildings, but where do they put it? And so I had that conversation with you and, and about putting it in those curbs and where you, where we have the parking and it kind of curves around to kind of get it in those curves, those corners as much as possible so that it's sort of out of the way. And I shared that with them and, and they were happy. But they're also talking about the possibility of purchasing the board and the members of the board would purchase their own equipment, like a small little, like ISU uses, golf cart plows. And maybe, you know, use that to take care of all the businesses that are members of the board, just do all the sidewalks or something. So they're looking at that and what they might be able to do to make that a little bit easier for their members. But that would then help the public who are shopping, who you said, you know, sometimes had to walk in the middle of the street or something like that. So hopefully we address that, you know, between what you do and, and what the board and the business owners do, we can help make it better.
On some of those locations, like down Yellowstone where they don't have green space or in downtown, usually those are about ten-foot sidewalk. And so you don't, I mean, it's the property owner's decision, but you don't necessarily have to clear the whole ten feet. You could just make an eight foot. And then you've got that two foot on the edge for storage.
Would you prefer that be on the street side or the building side?
The street side. That's the property owner's decision, but in the world of construction, you always want to move water away from structures, so.
And you want to make sure they, if they're going to do partial clearing of the sidewalk, that it's wide enough for anybody, like ADA requirements, yes, if there's a wheelchair or somebody that, that you don't just clear a tiny strip, that then creates a problem for people that have other challenges, yeah.
A lot of our, our standards are five-foot sidewalks, four-foot sidewalks. And so if you're running out of room to put stuff, you can always store it on.
If you have ten and clear at least five, you're good, yeah.
Cory?
No question. I just had a comment to just say thank you to the three of you, Tom, especially you and your staff for the hard work that you guys do to prepare us for the winter and to keep us safe and to keep our roads clear. It's not an easy task and not everyone's going to be happy, but you guys definitely do a lot of work to, to keep us safe. And so I just extend my appreciation to you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, super Rick.
I have to agree with that. And a lot of it's done when we don't see it. As Tom was saying earlier, you know, it's kind of like Santa Claus coming. You get up in the morning and the snow's gone in the street. And the little snow elves took care of that. But I, I, I don't think they get appreciated because we don't see that action happening and what they go through to make sure it happens.
Absolutely.
I would just add to that. I agree with everything that's been said. And I think that the magic of having it all cleared, I also want to just emphasize the difficulty of code enforcement too, because, you know, it's difficult and people have a lot of challenges during the winter and during snow. And so, you know, with code enforcement, you get to deal with a lot of the complaints and, and the people that are unhappy and everything. And I mean, all of you do, so I, I know that. But that side of it as well, the, the hard work that you do to keep everything clear, but then also, you know, dealing with people that are not always happy with things or don't always understand why you do what you do, which I think is why this information is really important. And somebody mentioned education, I, I think. I'm blanking on the, was it Sergeant?
Yeah.
Captain, sorry. I couldn't remember. Sergeant didn't sound right. I know it's Higbee, but I couldn't remember the rank. I'm sorry. Captain Higbee, yes, you mentioned education. And the more we educate people, the less upset they're going to be, the more they understand the processes. And then that makes it easier on you when you're interacting with the public. Appreciate all that work and effort.
And as a previous dispatcher, I know that it's not elves that are out there, right? We are constantly calling and adding to your list.
Yeah.
Well, I will tell you, I mean, we're out of time and we're out of time for any real questions and stuff, but I do, I do want to thank you, the three of you for being here, taking some time out of your night to be here. I think this is an important issue. It became more important Monday morning. And now it's not as important, but as soon as we have another storm, it'll be the most important thing that happens. And I think it's important for the community to know that we do have a plan, we are ready, we are moving forward with doing the things that we need to, to keep the community safe and keep the streets safe from, for travel and things like that. I appreciate Linda, your comment about code enforcement. Tori has one of the hardest jobs in the city, I think, because nobody likes to be told what they have to do. And, and unfortunately, there are some things, we, we live as a community and we have to do some certain things to help that community be mobile and, and help people out. Wheelchairs are, if you've, if you've never done it, I never have, I don't plan on it. But I understand that it's very difficult to move in snow in a wheelchair. And so if you think about that or you think about your grandmother walking down the street, that's a good way to, to consider the idea that, hey, I need to move the snow out of my sidewalks and things. We, we don't want to come and tell people, you have to do this. We do not want to have to give citations. That is a last resort as far as we're concerned. We're not interested in that. We're just interested in compliance and, and making it so that the community can move freely and be able to do what we need to do. So please be patient with us with a big snow event. Please be patient knowing that we've either been there and we'll be back or we'll be, we're coming very, very, as soon as we possibly can. But seven hundred miles, lane miles of road at ten miles an hour, takes, takes a minute to, to get through the community. So thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight and thank you for, for helping us understand a little bit more of what we do and, and how it, how it actually gets done, that the, the, what did you call them, the snow?
Snow elves.
The snow elves. The snow elves are out there doing their job when we need them to be done. Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.